And then we went ahead and canceled the track meet because we knew the weather was going to be horrible. So that kind of helped out the other situation because the weather didn't cooperate. And then I just told the softball kids, "I am not very prepared right now." They couldn't go. They're winning and they're having a great season on baseball. So anyway, that was, it's a heartbreaker for these kids that, because that was really what got the ball rolling, was when the Oklahoma Association of Activities OSSAA shut everything down. Like, they weren't, that's huge. And then when you saw the NBA shutdown, that's huge. And then everybody started following suit. So what that tells us in Oklahoma is that there's a lot more going on outside of Oklahoma than where or what. And so two weeks ago, I believe, New York and Seattle are kind of where we are now. And two weeks later, you can see where New York and Seattle are. They're in a, they are in, "Shut your restaurants, don't go outside." They don't have enough respirators and things for that. So, you know, in the last day, the mayor of Tulsa has, and I believe Oklahoma City, I, everything, all the information gets all jumbled up, but have said restaurants are closed, theaters are closed, cafes are closed, coffee houses are closed, except for drive-throughs. You can still drive through. So anyway, so then yesterday's news was also that Kansas has closed all of their schools for the rest of the year. So, we've had, we had a conference call with the State Department on Friday. And at that time, they did not close us down for two weeks after spring break. They were still being very conservative. The governor was, you know, they're both being conservative. And then by the time the weekend came through, they knew it was time to close schools. And with the, and they're going by CDC recommendations. They're not just pulling anything out of their hat. So, we were supposed to have a call on Monday, but she moved it to Tuesday because she was having meetings with the governor and with the CDC. And then the decision was made on Tuesday, I don't even know what day it is, Wednesday, Tuesday to go ahead and shut us down for two additional weeks after spring break. There are a lot of waivers being done through the State Department with the federal government so that we can still provide meals in a grab-and-go setting for kids, any one of our kids. Not just for you, but any one of our kids. So they're also doing, looking at waivers for testing. They're looking at waivers for everything that the federal government requires that we do. Because if we get, and I'll kind of talk about projections in a little bit. If we get anywhere near what's going on in other parts of the world, my opinion, and my opinion only, nothing in black and white, I'm not seeing anything, is that we will come back after spring break. Now, I don't know what that will mean. I don't know if they'll do it in a week-long, and then wait and see, week-long wait and see. But right now, we are completely closed down, except for administrative, business management, and maintenance, and child nutrition. Those are the only people that are allowed to kind of work in the school. The teachers, nobody right now can even get in the building. I just have shut all their cards off just to make, because you know, teachers are so diligent in what they do. They're going to want to be up here, and they're going to want to be preparing. And I, they need to stay home. They don't need to be up here doing that. They need to stay home, and that's the hardest thing with teachers, is not being in the classroom. So, what we've done in a 24-hour period is we have, we met as an administrative staff and got some things kind of set. Once a day, about 3 o'clock, I'll put out a social media update online and on the high school and middle school, and it'll also be posted on our website, about where we are daily. And so today, yesterday, what we did was we made some decisions about how to go forward with feeding kids, how to go forward with activities, because in the next two weeks, we had things like prom. And the State Department was adamant, "No, we won't have prom because the CDC says groups of 10." And we can't have a prom without having more than 10. Now, our intent is to have that prom. If we are back in school, we're going to make it happen. If we have to make it happen on a school day, and we do that, whatever we're going to do, because these kids are losing a lot. And that's what is the most heartbreaking of all of this, is you've got seniors that are losing their last seasons, that are losing their, you know, don't know what's going to happen with graduation. So we are, we are committed to making at least one, if not two, with graduation. Things happen for these kids however we can, if we can. If you've been watching the news, President Trump's been doing a very good job of, you know, laying it out very calmly, very matter-of-fact. And, and he has said, you know, things like, you know, he's trying to get everybody not to panic, but to do the things we need to do now so that we aren't in the position of New York and Seattle in two weeks. And I believe that we're doing some of those things. But he's also been kind of giving updates on where we are as far as like rest, medical equipment, vaccines, things like that. One of the projections that he made, and I believe that when he says these projections, he's listening to the CDC and the people that are close to him. I believe that when he says that it could be June, July, you know, August before we're completely finished with this. Now, June, July, and August doesn't mean that we'll be at the high peak, but it still means that we'll have cases that we're trying to contain and trying to get through. So you can see that our timeframe for this looks like about four, four months of trying to figure it out. So it's not just a short-term, and we are short-term societies. We want things fixed in 30 seconds, you know? It's like, we're, we're quick on it. Social media, we're quick, let's fix these problems, let's go on. Well, this is something that is just going to slow us down to our core, and we're going to just have to wait it out. Okay, so the plan for, any questions at this point? Can I answer anything? Do we need to separate him? Sticking to that, the, the State Department has, is working with the legislature to ease some of the rules that we have. So the 6th of April, there's a good possibility, we'll probably do that as a video meeting, trying to keep everybody out. I asked the principals not to be here today because that would have been over 10 people. We met yesterday, they're all, they're all on the same page we are right now, so.
As far as contingency plans, do we have, you're in discussion with the other administrators on, if this happens, this is what we're going to follow, and if this happens, this is what we're going to follow. If we are able to meet and check some boxes, we'll.
Yes. Yeah, we have, as far as like, if, if we, if, if they close school, I don't believe they're going to make us do any education. Because there's too big of a discrepancy between kids. Some kids have all the things they need to do it, some kids don't have any of the things they need to do it. Also, if you're passing papers back and forth, we'll bring this in, you're passing the files back and forth. So I believe that if it closes down, I, and I can kind of see that they've already built some things to accommodate us not coming back for the rest of the year. Like, they've already told us that, you know, they're planning to take our absentee and our chronic absentee, absentee and our AD and average data membership from the first day of school till March 1st. So after March 1st, they won't look at any data. So that way, they can still get the data that they need if we don't complete a school year. So I think they're, uh-huh, uh-huh. I think, I think that the State Department is not saying all these things because they, they're like us. They can't, they're, they're trying to plan, but you can't create panic, and you also have to take it moment by moment, because this just changes every hour. Okay, we, we have put in a, sorry. We have put in a very abbreviated schedule for the next two weeks. As far as the cafeteria goes, Esther will be here with one other person. The superintendent's office will rotate every day. Amanda will be here. I'll, I'll jump in and rotate one day. And Judy will rotate one day. And we will be here from 12, 9 to 12, just so that if the phones need to be answered, the mail needs to be cut out, the clerical part of our jobs can still be done. I don't care, think anybody cares about COVD-19 on payday. They want, they care that Judy has been in that office and done that work. So we're going to keep our end of it going as, and Amanda is keeping her end of it going with child nutrition because there's a lot of moving parts right now with child nutrition. So that's, and, and on Wednesdays at the high school and the elementary, we will have Kendra and Cassie and an administrator here. So if anybody wants to call and ask questions, they can, they know that there's one day a week that there'll be an administrator available and a clerical, administrative clerical person. This Monday, we will have somebody in those offices for, from 9 to noon to pick up any kind of medications that their child was taking, that they might have left at school, so that when they come back for school, they'd have their medications that they take throughout the day or whatever. So I have asked people to please call us, let us know, we'll have that ready. Because we're really not going to just let everybody in the office. We'll kind of meet them outside, give it to them, and make sure everybody has what they need from us. Okay, special education is a whole different animal because those kids on IEP have written services that must be followed in order to be compliant with what their IEP says. Well, we have a 10-day window right now. So you can, you cannot do services for 10 days without a change of placement for that child or any kind of a change of their IEP. So we are going to work within this, this two-week period to watch and listen to see what's going to happen in the future. Because what will have, maybe have to happen is, we might have to extend services to those kids in the summer. OTPT, speech, whatever their needs are. And we might have to do an extended school in the summer. Those are just options. Those are just things that we're looking at. But we are in close contact with the State Department, who's in close contact with feds about special education needs and those kids. So we're on that one too. One of the things that we talked about yesterday is that Heather has an enormous amount of food in her food pantry. And we are going to be servicing our kids twice a day. And one of the things that I kind of, I asked her to do was to look at maybe doing bags for senior citizens. Maybe if we've got some seniors in our area that are elderly, they can't fight the crowds, you know, if we advertise that we have some bags here, there are senior bags, please come pick one up if you need it, and, and then just as a service to our community. Because I think we're all in this together, and it has such great response from our emergency management team here in, in our county, from our banks, from our businesses, from our patrons. What can I do? What can I do? What can I do? So I, I really thought that that would be a good use of that food because for the most part, we are going to be getting kid food to our kids. And there'll be quite a bit of food in there for the, for, for the day, anyway.
I think meals on wheels are shutting down too.
I didn't know that.
That's what I was told yesterday by one of the people that received the.
Well, so that's even a better idea than if we have just some, you know, just kind of, whatever she has in her pantry, canned goods and non-perishables and things like that, that maybe some of our elderly community could utilize that. I didn't know that.
Will they be so good to deliver if they're not able to get it?
Yes. We have a lot of people who have said, "If we're going to have to deliver meals, I'll do it." Natalie texted me and said, "Tessa and I would love to deliver meals." And our teachers, Janet Hester, Charity Van Beeter, Katie Lancaster, you know, on and on and on and on. They've already contacted me and said, "Listen, we, I have the ability to help, let me help." So we are going to utilize them in delivery services. And we're working all those bugs out, but I think we've kind of got a good stand on that. All activities are canceled. The OSSAA did put out an email yesterday, a guidance email, that said, "No practices, no, no games, no unofficial practices where you say, 'Hey, I'm going to open it up, and if you want to just come,'" it's not really a called practice, no. This is a complete and total shutdown of everything that we do. So that, if you hear that's happening, you let me know because I am calling somebody pretty quick, and it will not be a fun conversation for either of us. So that is just what the, where we are. And it's new, and it's uncharted, and it's weird, but that's where we are.
Dawn, if the worst-case scenario does happen where they shut us down for the rest of the school year, are we still waiting on where the, we've got enough back information for kids to move on to the next grade?
Yes.
Or are we still waiting for them to decide, are we going to have to have some kind of intermediate testing between?
I can't speak to what they might require us to do. But if it's up to us as a local board, what I will do is I will come to you with a recommendation that we take what happened on March 1st.
Right.
And we close it down. If anybody was failing the class that they needed for graduation, we're going to take care of that. We're going to get with that one individual kid. We're going to make sure that nobody fails, nobody, that there's not anybody that doesn't graduate. And we are going to do the best that we can for those kids under the situation.
And into on a case-to-case basis?
Yeah. So if, if somebody at March 1st passing everything, everything's good. Next year, they just start at the next level. If, if we've got somebody that's failing a class, we have the ability to do that with just one-on-one online. Get them up to speed, make sure that they're passing, make sure they go on. So that's kind of what I will bring to you unless the State Department tells me I have to do some things.
Yeah.
And I, and then you, if you guys have other suggestions, just let me know. Prom will be rescheduled. We will be giving out, the elementary does a backpack program. So on Thursday, there are kids that signed up for backpack, food backpacks. So for the next two weeks, on Thursday, they can pick that backpack up when they pick up their lunch and their breakfast. If any of our children, any of our employees, anybody has been out of the country over spring break, there's a 14-day mandatory, they have to stay home and self-monitor for any kind of disease. To my knowledge, everybody that we had on staff that was going to take a cruise, going to go someplace, canceled. I don't think there's anybody that went ahead, is anybody else aware, anybody that you can think of that I might not be thinking about? Girls, you think, anybody? No, Heather was supposed to go and they canceled. Sammy was supposed to go on a cruise, she canceled. She had kids that had been going.
Laura did cancel.
Who did? Deborah? Laura, they canceled.
I think that they were all shut down afterwards anyways.
I think they got up there and then called them back, didn't they? Is that what?
I had, I had somebody else that was supposed to go and they didn't, well, because they got canceled.
So I don't think that we have anybody that's going to have to self-contain for 14 days. But we do, if they got back this week, there is a 14-day period. Now, I don't believe that we're in a self-contained 14-day period if you're traveling in the United States. I don't believe that. I have seen that, like, what. I think that there is a, a thought process going on about that, but I have not seen any, the governor or anybody say, people in our state, "If you travel outside our state in the USA, you have to self-quarantine for 14 days." But I will check on that just to make sure. Okay, um, okay. Now I'm going to talk really briefly about what the setup is for meals. Because we have applied for a waiver with the State Department, who's applied for a waiver with the federal, so that we can do some things differently. So what we're going to do is today, we will put out a Google form on social media, and then we will put out a text message to every one of our parents, because we have that as part of our new system, that says, "Here's the Google form. It's on social media. If you don't have the ability to do that, here is the number you need to call or text." On our form, it says the process of how to get your, your food. And also you put your kid, your child's name, everybody's name on there that is going to need food, and we need them to do it for a week. So if you need breakfast and lunch for your child, and if you think, "Oh, I just need it Monday through, Tuesday, Wednesday. I'll be home Thursday and Friday." That, that's, I would just assume everybody do it for a week. Because you never know what will happen. And that way, I know how to plan for food. And so we can make bags for every child that needs it for a solid week, and then have it ready to pick up. And we've done a pickup time from 10 to noon every day, where they'll just come through the back parking lot, stop there at the door, or the cafeteria. And the ladies will have them all in alphabetical order, and they'll pick up the, the kids' bags, and I'll hand them to the kids, and then they'll go to the next car. And we'll do that for two hours a day. And at that time, is when I would like for us to be able to say, "If you're a senior citizen and need a bag, come on through."
Right.
And if they can't come through, then I have the volunteers that will do a delivery. So that's kind of our plan now. We, we're, Esther's ordering today. Things like, she'll make, she'll make wraps, she'll make, you know, sandwich wraps. She'll make, she'll put a muffin in there, put a piece of fruit. Put, because they have also lightened up the requirements on the per-plate, you know, craziness that we have to follow. So now we don't necessarily have to follow the food plan, and that makes it a lot easier to make these bags for food. So that is our plan, and we are going to roll it out today and hopefully have everybody by noon tomorrow telling us what they need, order the food, have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they get it ready, Monday, be ready to go. So that's our plan for second tip. Let's see, all right.
The breakfast and lunch, they'll pick up together one time, right, or not, or?
That is not part of the waiver yet.
Okay. The, the, Saturday and Sunday, you know, I mean, will they have food for Saturday and Sunday, or just the weekdays?
You know, the only, the only way we accommodate Saturday and Sunday for anyone is those backpacks. And so if, if parents signed up for those backpacks, then they would have food for the weekend. But if they didn't, then we're just the Monday through Friday kind of business. And, you know, everything is, you know, we, I, if, if things continue for the rest of the year, we will continue to do food service for the rest of the year. And, you know, it may be that we, you know, do a meal once, once a week, an evening meal, and do, I don't know. Don't tell the food service people I said that. Okay, yesterday's meeting with the State Department. As of yesterday, there were 17 confirmed cases. What's the number now? Does anybody know? No? I, I think it's up to 20, honestly.
It's up to 21.
Yeah, and so there is a website specifically for coronavirus information. And it is coronavirus dot, at, at health dot ok dot gov. And I put that out on my social media yesterday. So if you ever want to know the most up-to-date information for Oklahoma, that is the website to do that. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about teacher pay because we're going to talk about support in a motion, or in a, in a discussion item. Teacher pay and administrative pay.
Did you jump to three, or are you still on two?
No, 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 I'm just in my notes.
Oh, okay.
Because on the agenda, we're going to talk about support, and because they did not, there's not a safety net for support in law right now. But there is for teacher pay. Teacher pay and administrative pay is all covered under some legislation that came into effect probably about the time that we started having, you know, major crises like the school shootings. You know, we've always had the tornado threat, things like that. So there was some legislation in Oklahoma that covered teachers and administrators, but it did not cover support. So we're going to talk about that in our number three. So they will be paid during the statewide closure. That, that was just dieting. My next item is virtual schools, virtual Oklahoma charter schools are included in this shutdown. So they cannot start picking up our kids because their kids, their parents want them to be in school. So the virtual schools are shut down also. So that is kind of, it was kind of important to us. Let's see, extra activities, talk about that. IP, talked about that. There is no change in the state testing window right now. There, Superintendent Hofmeister said this yesterday, and it was kind of just, kind of just hidden in what all she said. But she said, "There is a likelihood of extended closure." And she said that kind of in the testing portion of that. So those are the things that are kind of making me think that after two weeks, and I don't know, it will be really maybe coming back. But hopefully, if things turn a corner, that would be wonderful. The legislators are working right now to fix the problem that we have with support pay and being able to do that legally. And we will not have to make these days out. It is a national, it's a state-national emergency. And concurrent enrollment, if the colleges continue their concurrent enrollment and their virtual, our concurrent enrollment kids can continue their concurrent enrollment. And that's about it. Evan was, call Amanda, get her on the seamless application, so we did that. Okay, so there's my notes from administrative meeting, my notes from the meeting with the State Superintendent. You've got the coronavirus question and answer sheets in the event you need any kind of a reference. Please, please feel free to ask them to call me, get online, message me, text me, Facebook a question. I will answer any question at any time to my, to the best of my ability with the changing information that we've got going on. Did I miss anything? Is there anything else you'd like to know about?
How quick will you start the, you probably said that the food, how quick will it be?
Monday.
This?
Just Monday. We're going to order, she's going to order. We're going to do, try to get everybody in in 24 hours. That's the big thing. We'll also make additional sacks so that if kids didn't get the order and they stopped by, they say, "I just didn't know that, but I need my kid to eat," there you go, do it. So we're, we're going to be, try to, try to be very non-difficult about those things. If you have any more questions, please text them. I mean, I try to give you guys a text update as, as much as I can. Sometimes, like yesterday, it just got so quick, and I feel like I was, I gave too much, but.
Number three, discussion and possible votes to place support personnel on paid administrative leave until April 6, 2020, under emergency circumstances mandated by the state of emergency called by the governor of Oklahoma and mandatory closing of all Oklahoma schools by the state board of education. called by the Governor of Oklahoma and mandatory closing of all Oklahoma schools by the State Board of Education.
You know, I think in the end, this, this, this thing, the kind of thing would have been not really helped, you wouldn't be held accountable for still doing it. But if our auditor gave us any questioning about what we were doing, I wanted to make sure that we had put something in place that gives us the ability to say, listen, this is what we did and we paid our people and because we want to do. And so I, I thought about several different ways that maybe this could happen to be able to pay support staff. But the, the whole thing boils down to this. I don't want them here. I don't want to physically be here. You know, I'm going to have a couple in for child nutrition every day and one in at the superintendent's office and once a week, somebody in there. But it's going to be very, very limited. But in order to say, we're going to pay people that are paid by a time clock and not paid on salary, we, I think this was the best way that I could find to do this and make it legal and make sure everybody still got a paycheck. So what I'm asking you to vote on, either way, Esther, no, is to put them on paid administrative leave until the 6th. The 6th is when we have our next board meeting, and I'll know much more by the 6th. And so if they're on administrative paid leave, that everything goes on just like it ever did. You know, and it's not administrative paid leave like you do when someone's in trouble or their, their job isn't being done correctly. It is an emergency situation that is beyond our control. So I, I really, for the next, till May 17th or till everybody's contract is expired, I would really like for us to work hard to find a way to pay everybody and not have anybody worried about where the payments are coming from. Because through this time, we will still be getting monthly money from, you know, I don't know what it's going to look like because when the state has put everybody at home and nobody's spending money, or just like in town too, no, it, and I want to say this, I'm proud. Everybody needs to shop local, please shop local, keep our people in business. And I think if we can create a confidence, then what happens is that it's a domino effect. All of our CETA employees are confident, they have people that are confident, they have people who are confident, kind of like the virus. All our CETA people have it, everybody else is wrong. So anyway, that's my recommendation for today. And because it's a very fluid situation, we'll talk about it again on the 6th. Now, if there happens to be between now and the 6th, any kind of change comes down from the State Department, the state of Oklahoma, then I might ask us to get together again in a meeting that is a, you know, like I'm going to do at 3 o'clock today with all of our staff. I'll be on the computer, they get to log in or call in with the number we provided, and then I'm going to go over all of this with our staff so that they feel good and they know what's going on and their information is given out. Any questions about that? Well, guys, we're, we're, I, I appreciate all of our staff that's working so hard from wherever they are to make this easier. Appreciate you guys coming in and we'll get through this. We will rise above.
I'll make a motion to support personnel on paid administrative leave until April 6, 2020. Amber's made a second. Anta or Judy?
Louisville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willi?
Yes.
Number four, discussion and vote to adjourn. Amber's made a motion.
I'll second.
Does her second. Judy?
Willi?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Louisville?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.